All right, first of all, Happy New Years to everyone. And welcome to this, to our regular business meeting, first of the year. So we will have a moment of silence for our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, in which we will ask our Veteran of the Month to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And that will be U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Judith Lynn Cotton. Please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to our January 2nd, 2024, regular business meeting. The first order of business is our adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
All right, any amendments? All right, here none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So move. I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
And Mr. Chair, I have a point of information for the public.
Go ahead.
In regards to item seventeen on the agenda. We have an updated synopsis, and it is just a mild variation in the language, so I just wanted to read it for the public's knowledge. So the updated synopsis for Resolution 2024-9, which is item seventeen on the agenda, reads as follows. This resolution authorizes Clayton County to accept a $15,000 donation per year from Florida Rock Industries Incorporated for the establishment of an annual scholarship fund for graduates of high schools located in Commissioner District Two. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is our presentation for our Veteran of the Month.
All right. Veteran of the Month. U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Judith Lynn Cotton. Staff Sergeant Judith Lynn Cotton was born on October 30th, 1961, in Bedford-Studivast, Bedstow, Brooklyn, New York.
Bedstars?
Yeah, that part, what you just said. We're gonna go with what you just said. New York to Lester and Lydia and Cat, Cotton. In June of 1979, Judith graduated from high school, attended college, and gave birth to her son, Daquan, on September 20th, 1980. Unfortunately, the crack epidemic plagued New York, which led her to join the U.S. Army in November of 1980. Her 20 years of military service was in the administrative and legal fields, and she served with military intelligence, military police, and the Judge Advocate General Accord, better known as JAG. She also served as a paralegal. She used the power of the law, the Uniform Code of Military Justice, to assist soldiers with their defense. Judy was stationed at Fort Hamilton, New York, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Fort Jackson, South Carolina, Honduras, South Korea, Atlanta Military Entrance Processing Station at Fort Gillum, and retired honorably at Fort Seale, Oklahoma, in June of 2001. Post-retirement, Judy is a licensed realtor in various states with 22 years of experience. She's a broker-owner of two full-service real estate firms in a property management division with a licensed real estate instructor and owner of two real estate academies. Judy is a licensed life and health insurance producer with 15 years of experience and the owner of New Vision Agency in Georgia. Judy loves volunteering with her church, sororities, and veteran organizations. Her service includes distributing food and clothing, reading to students, donating undergarments and hygiene items to living assistance facilities, mentoring veterans in the court system, and junior ROTC students. Judy earned an Associate Degree in Liberal Arts. She's a recipient of the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award from President Joe Biden, the founder and national president of Omicron NuKai Military Sorority, Inc., a lifetime member of the National Association of Black Military Women, currently serving as the National Secretary and President for the Metro Atlanta Chapter, a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., and that's just the name of few of her affiliations. She is also a faithful member of Shiloh Baptist Church, Jonesboro, where she serves as the pastor's executive administrator and trustees chairwoman. Help me to recognize and honor our Veteran of the Month, U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Judy Lynn Cotton.
[applause]
All right. On three.
One, two, three. And one, two.
Come on, come on.
Family first.
Call family.
Let your family go first.
Just come on.
Well, if they are, they just come on.
Come on.
Come on.
Get it up short.
That's not right.
All right.
All right.
He got a shot.
All right.
One, two.
Oh, wait a minute.
Come on.
Come on.
Family first.
Call family.
Let your family go first.
Just come on.
Okay.
Well, if they are, they just come on.
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 This is presented by Deputy Chief Operating Officer Landry Murkison on behalf of Commissioner Dr. Alika Anderson.
So thank you. So this past November, we had the opportunity to host the Second Annual Eighteen Holes for Heroes Golf Tournament, which benefits all of public safety in Clayton County. So this year's tournament was bigger and better than year one. We came very, very close to selling the tournament out, but we are very, very grateful to everybody that came out and helped support it. The proceeds go directly to help public safety in Clayton County. So on behalf of the Tournament Committee, Chief Roberts, Chief Swett, Sheriff Levon Allen, who had his staff out there with us as well, it is our pleasure to present Dr. Anderson and the Board of Commissioners $58,768.31.
All right, on three. Chief Murkison, go this way. And then lower down. On three, one, two, again. One, two, perfect.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here are none. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number eighteen, Resolution 2024-5, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and Board. I have Resolution 2024-5, which is a resolution providing for the designation of the Vice Chair for the Board of Commissioners to provide for the term of office of the Vice Chair to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Demont Davis. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item nineteen, Ordinance 2024-10.
Ordinance 2024-10 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County as amended specifically to amend Part I related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter II Administration, Article II Board of Commissioners, Section 2-35, Agenda, Duties of the Presiding Officer, Minutes, Quorum, Public Comment, Section 2-35-05, Public Comment, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Three, one, three, two, it fails. Next.
Mr. Chair, our next items on the agenda are board appointments, starting with item number twenty.
All right, first board appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Joe Grubbs resigned from the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities. He was appointed in 2021 to fill the unexpired term of Janet Scott. New term is three years, beginning immediately and expiring on February 28, 2024. Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, I move we hold this. I'm actually in conversation with a few folks right now, trying to fill that position.
All right, Madam Clerk, you clear.
I'm clear.
I have a question. How many weeks have we held all these items from?
Well, that's the individual commissioner's preference. They can hold it. They can ask for it to be held. This is the second one that we're holding. All right, next board appointment is also to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three. Ms. Monica Hooker's term on the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities will expire on January 19, 2024. New term is three years, expiring on January 19, 2027. Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to reappoint Dr. Monica Hooker.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is Board of Ethics. Robert Bell's appointment on the Board of Ethics ends January 31, 2024. New appointment is in January of each new year, beginning with District One and continuing in numerical order. This year, the appointment comes from District Four, Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, I move to reappoint Mr. Robert Bell.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is Board of Ethics. Walter Nix's term on the Board of Ethics will expire February 7, 2024. New term is for four years, expiring on February 7, 2028. Chairman Turner's appointment, I move to reappoint him. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is Board of Ethics. Walter Nix's term on the Board of Ethics will expire February 7, 2024. New term is for four years, expiring on February 7, 2028. Chairman Turner's appointment, I move to reappoint him. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
How did you vote, Commissioner?
You remember, you all don't allow me to vote.
I don't know. You're confused. One abstention. You are confused with it.
No, I abstained based upon my attorney's statement. It's the same.
Two, two, so reference to that, Mr. Reed, on appointments.
Abstention due to litigation.
So that appointment did not pass?
Well, until we come up with another one, then he remains until something else transpires.
Correct.
Okay. Next board appointment is also the Board of Ethics. Marcus Thorpe's term on the Board of Ethics will expire on February 7, 2024. Mr. Thorpe was recommended to fill this term by the Clayton County Bar Association. He was appointed by the Board of Commissioners on October 3, 2023. New term is for four years, expiring February 7, 2028. This is a bar association appointment. I'm asked to hold that until they get back to me in reference to reappointing or sending us a new one. Next board appointment is also Board of Ethics. Marla Thompson's term on the Board of Ethics will expire February 7, 2024. New term is four years, expiring on February 7, 2028. This is an appointment from the Clayton County Council Mayors, and they have not had a chance to meet yet, so we will hold that till next meeting. Next board appointment is Tax Assessors Board. Ted Lawson's term on Tax Assessors Board expired December 31, 2023. Commissioner Hamburg's nomination. Jacqueline Wills was appointed at the December 5, 2023 meeting, but is no longer able to serve. New term is for three years, beginning immediately. Commissioner Hamburg. End in 2024-6, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to appoint, excuse me, Patricia McCoy.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
One abstention due to litigation.
Madam Clerk.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Please remember that comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Vice Chair Davis, Chairman Turner. Commissioners Franklin and Anderson want to be the Chair of the Board of Commissioners and represent the county, but both voted to put our voice at the end of the meeting and reduce it to two minutes. That means your opinion matters, let your voice be heard, is a lie. Commissioner Franklin falsified her affidavit of candidacy and violated campaign expenditures rules, got intoxicated at 404 Sports Bar, then assaulted an EMT worker, embarrassing the county. No remorse, no apology. Her comments are irrelevant, incompetent, and immaterial. Commissioner Anderson supports mandatory trash pickup, but didn't show up for the town hall meeting in her district. She said we would get two choices. We got none. Another lie. There is a difference between garbage, trash, and litter. Gwinnett has mandatory trash and has an illegal dumping problem, mattress and tires. South Fulton has mandatory trash and has a double billing problem. Chairman Turner, several years ago, I showed you Clayton County Public Schools ranked 174th in Georgia and had a grade D. Guess who was the chairperson of the Board of Education?
Gwen Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Gwen Gooden, Clayton County. Commissioners, Chairman Turner. Commissioner Franklin doesn't pay her taxes in a timely manner, yet she wants to be our next chairperson. When Commissioner Anderson was the chairperson of the Board of Education, she took the board members to France for a conference instead of using teleconferencing and saving those funds for our childrens. She also wants to be our next chairperson. Neither woman has the skill set, either woman becomes chairperson, can you spell bankruptcy? We have a financially irresponsible and inexperienced sheriff who constantly comes to this board requesting millions of dollars. Perhaps if he sells the electric vehicles that we don't have charging stations for, recoup thousands of dollars by removing his relatives from his payroll, stop providing the unnecessary security for the women commissioners, then we will be able to restore the required amount to our general fund to afford the possibility of our credit and bond ratings getting downgraded. The former CFO Biffen's budget always had a surplus. This county needs to get its house in order. Thank you.
Aretha Ensley.
Good evening, Aretha Ensley, Clayton Incorporated, Chairman Turner, Vice Chairman, and others. My question, why hasn't DA Mosley requested a special grand jury to investigate alleged violations by District Three Commissioner regarding the 2020 election fraud, falsifying affidavits, illegal use of campaign donations, assaulting EMT workers, and filing false police reports? Why the ongoing preferential treatment? Is this what is happening in this county? You all are so buddy-buddy, so that if you scratch my back, I'll return the favor? I have only lived here 16 years, but many of us, the citizens, decided it was time for Elgin Bell and Wilmer Raff to move on. That was years ago. Why? They ignored our request and our needs for Clayton. We were successful in doing just what removing, we were just successful in just doing that, removing them from office. Because of your lack of understanding and your insensibilities to the needs of the residents, is it time for a new regime? Why is it so difficult to do your job? Why is there such urgency as being reelected? You see all the signs, you see all the beautiful cards being sent to homes, but what happened? What are you doing for us? Why is this, what is the vision for the Clayton County? I hope it isn't what is happening now. It is heartbreaking to see the craziness. This county has such great potential, but evidently, it's difficult for you to comprehend how to get there. Thank you.
Teresa Tally.
Love Joe Walmart made some accommodations to stop the truck drivers from illegally parking overnight. They posted big and straightforward signs, "No Parking Violators" would be told. They also hired a security company to monitor the parking lot. On the other side of the building, near Goodyear, the owner put up a fence to avoid overnight parking and dumping of trash. That made a huge difference. Across the street, which is Food Depot Truck Stop, I emailed Commissioner Franklin, Captain McDonald, and Warren Nelson several months ago. The problem is still there. Code enforcement will not give the owner of the plaza a citation because they say they are working with the owner. That's not what the signs say. How is the owner working with code enforcement? There is no security monitoring, no bigger signs. The owner refused to spend out any money to make this nuisance go away. They only collecting money from the renters. Code enforcement is giving Food Depot owner special privileges. The BP owner, on the other hand, was given a citation for trash on the property, and to avoid another citation, they hired a parking lot attendant to clean the parking lot. That made a big difference. Why is it that the owner of Food Depot is giving all of these privileges? Is 2024, the truck drivers are still parking there? How do we fix this? Thank you.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, congratulations. Commissioners, boy, I tell you, we about to embark on 2024, and I want to have an optimistic point of view as we move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. And I'd like to commend the Ward Nelson and my good friends at the Fire Marshal's Office. They assist me very heavily in my endeavors. But I want to expound upon the IGA agreement, the Development Authority and their Economic Development Office. I never got an answer back from the COO in reference to where are we? There are a lot of wonderful things that are occurring, me privately and throughout the community in moving this county forward, but we have no clarity. Do the Development Authority write bonds? And do the Economic Development Office promote the county? And I ask for full transparency in reference to that, because at the ultimate, at the end of the day, ultimately, we have to win on either side. So this appears to be a conflict. A lot of developers are confused. They don't know which way to turn. So that IGA agreement has been in limbo for the last three years. And Chairman, I'd just like to know if somebody can email me and give me a status on the IGA agreement. on whether that lands because I know there was a conflict with the Development Authority and the Economic Development Office. So, we can assist in the private sector and the government sector to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. That's critically important.
Well, I can't tell you it's being discussed, but it's going, we're talking, the legal folks are.
It's legal.
But it is being paid attention to.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next legitimate speaker.
Thank you, sir. David Hamburg. Hamburg. Officer, if you will. I brought a prop along.
David Hamburg, Riverdale, District Three. After going through our fun-filled, for some it wasn't, New Year's Eve celebration, I'd like the chairmans to look at this. If you would, please. I'm not going to approach, but I will let the officer do the honor. Folks, it's time, we need to evaluate things. While fireworks may be legal in the state of Georgia, we need to cut down the amount of stuff this is. At quarter after 1:00 a.m., we still have gunshots going through the air, fireworks exploding. I'm over in Park Ridge Subdivision off Taylor Road. Now, my generation was Vietnam. I promise you, there was over 500 rounds discharged through that area. What you're looking at is a nine-millimeter bullet. It is a hollow point. That came off my concrete patio. So, I want you all to take a look at it. One thing you will notice, as the saying goes, a bullet has no name. Now, I am with the NRA ILA Division. We do not, and I repeat, do not accept this behavior. This can cause injury, death, property damage. Right now, over in Well Point, you have a lady with a damaged windshield. East Point, you have a person whose shoulder was injured by a bullet, and there's other damages going on in the county. I do not have the complete report. Since the officers do a great job, I would like to ask if we could investigate and maybe put up sound monitors, which are used in the other counties and states in the United States of America, to track these gunshots. Thank you. Have a great time. Hopefully, we'll all have a safe New Year.
Thank you, sir. Carol Yancy. You want it back, huh?
I'll quote Ronnie Van Sant. Give me back my bullet. That's evidence, shall we say.
Well, you need to give it to the man in the back if there's evidence.
I'd love to.
Yes, ma'am.
Carol Yancy, Ritz, Georgia. Thank you to the citizens who assisted me with the homeless working mom living in her car with kids. We collected nearly $1,200, which included four gift cards and food. The majority was cash, which provided lodging through at least Christmas night. December 19, sheriff's presentation claimed his office is fully staffed, yet December 11, two journalists held hostage in front of his jail, his property, for two hours until their coworkers drove over 20 minutes to flag a CCPD officer. Sheriff's staff, MIA. His request for more of our tax dollars would be used for campaign gimmicks and further waste and mismanagement of our tax dollars. The sheriff's office is a sequel to Roman United. HB 78, ethics legislation, where several commissioners and county staff colluded with Senators C. and Davenport, all so-called Democrats, to request 33 Republicans and 23 Democrats to vote against accountability, transparency, and the will of the people. Voters, which is 80% or greater, Democrats. The same Democrats that use race baiting rhetoric against the Republicans as distractions for their do-nothing attitude for this county. Now, every time Number Three Mess Up hits, or her mess hits the fan, along with the latest approval, redrawing maps, the bat spashes hit the same courthouse faces. Is this poetic justice or karma? Thank you.
Jody Chambers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jody Chambers. I am a resident of Clayton County in District Three. And I just want to read this to you. Clayton County residents recently voted in a special election on November 7, 2023, and we were asked if the qualifying Freeport Item Exemption status should be 80%, implying the items would be 20% taxable. Many locals like myself voted yes. However, in public comments at the county's recent Board of Commissioners meeting, constituent offered her perspective on what the commissioner should do with the 20% collected with Freeport taxes. She stated that funds raised by the Freeport taxes will be spent on a comprehensive plan for Keeping Clayton Beautiful program, streetlights, roads repairs, and speed bumps in her division. I completely believe we should revive Keeping Clayton Clean, in which we recently cleaned up the county and requested volunteers from the community, which she did not participate. As a member of this county for District Three, I believe that the monies collected from the Freeport taxes should not be spent. The monies collected from the Freeport taxes must be saved, preferably in an interest-bearing account, grants, contractual agreements, and other resources, other ways of getting money to keep Clayton beautiful and infrastructure. We also have grants available for Keeping Clayton Clean that we don't have to use our monies. There's a lot of free grants available for all other expenses in the county. So, I believe that we need to really save our money. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session? And as you come, Senator Davenport, it's good to see you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, litigation and real estate.
Is there a motion going to executive session for litigation and real estate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you all for coming, and Happy New Year to each and every one of you once again.
Motion to reconvene.
Yes.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
All right, I'd like to ask for authority for the county to transfer property that it owns at 667 South Avenue in Forest Park, Georgia, and 13079A-C025 to transfer title to the city of Forest Park and authorize the chairman to execute any documents in order to carry out that request and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget, if necessary, to also support that request as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Anderson made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Davis made the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Have a good evening.